Hold on, hold on. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mary Ann Lora?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth.
Counselor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Diaman?
Here.
Counselor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Fucie?
Here.
Counselor Hudson?
Here.
Just take a moment, say a prayer for Deputy Mayor Joanne Whitworth. She's in the hospital right now. She's in Montowees and we're hoping for a speedy recovery. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18, 2014 town council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fucie. Roll call.
Mary Ann Lora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diaman?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Hudson?
Epstein.
Counselor Lewis.
Epstein.
Water Pollution Control Authority meeting agenda, unfinished business, discussion and action. Item A, approval of sanitary sewer collection system contract with Viola Water.
Good evening. This item will have to appear again on the January meeting. It's not quite ready. There's been some discussions back and forth with the vendor, Viola Water, myself and the town attorney's office, just to make sure all provisions are basically complete and approved by the town attorney's office. Just a quick overview, it's pretty much, it's very similar to the similar agreement we have with them. Viola Water has been doing our services for the past nine years. They were a low bidder recently to do the sanitary sewer operations and maintenance contract for us. They've been a very good vendor. Pretty much kept everything the same. We cleared up a few things that, over the years, but basically, we've included in the new agreement, the call before you digs, which was an appendix in our old agreement, that got included in there. They're doing some TV work for us to, as part of contract, that was put out to bid. Just as far they'll be doing, they do the flushing and then they'll be TVing some of the lines, so we have a better handle on. We have a few problem areas and we get good data on it that may lead to some capital improvements down the road, if we have leakage or infiltration or like. And basically, there's a provision in there for capital improvements. The town attorney's office looked at, basically, if we want to do upgrades, basically, we're going to utilize their expertise, but also, everything has to go through the purchasing policies. So that's the bulk of it. Again, I anticipate this, being at the first meeting in January, I think everybody's agreed to everything, but I don't want to have it on for any type of approval until you have the actual agreement in your hands to look at beforehand.
So do we need a motion to table this? I'd make a motion to table this item. The approval of the sanitary sewer collection system contract with Viola Water.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diaman. Roll call.
Mary Ann Lora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diaman?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Counselor Hudson?
Yes.
Item four, new business. Item five, citizen statements and petitions. Regular town council meeting. Item six, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, permanent project building committee.
Permanent project met last night in regards to the Stanley T. Williams Community Center. They have approximately $63,000 left from the money that the town council had appropriated and the steep grants. And so, at this point in time, there's some items that are at the top of the list that need to be done. One is the sign on the outside of the building and also lighting, exterior lighting on the building. After those two are taken into account, there will be approximately $25,000 to $30,000 left. So the park and rec department and the commission will be discussing and prioritizing a list that Pam has put together for that. And their next meeting is next week. And as far as the projects go, the high school roof project, the town has received, they did receive the warranty on the roof. So that will be closing that project out shortly. There's just some minor payments left to them, which are due approximately 30 days after we accept the warranty. On the TBS roof project, later on in the agenda, you'll see there's the contract from Hibbert and Rose, the architects, for approval. The last month was a proposal that we had approved and a contract was sent to John to review. And the auditorium is kind of on hold until they see, it's kind of on about a six-month hold to see what kind of water problems, because the board that has done some maintenance work on that building, that has stopped some of the water issues, so they want to see if the floor continues, the water still is coming in through the front doors, or if there's any other issues, so that project is on hold. So that's it as far as the billing committee.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, Economic Development Commission.
Nothing to report. There was not a meeting, although I will give a, just FYI, that on the economic development front, be meeting with representatives of the gas company tomorrow afternoon to discuss extension of the line in the Northford area through and past Stanley T. Williams and Totucket Valley and various municipal buildings. So hoping to report back to the council some fruitful information in terms of that development in the future at the next meeting, hopefully in January.
Item C, BOE, in town council communications subcommittee.
This committee met last night and some of the issues that we talked about were the Board of Ed, the capital projects, that they have the track, the bathrooms, and the science labs. As we know from a couple months ago, the bid that they got for the track was approximately $90,000. They held off just because of the timing of the year in getting it done. And I believe in our capital budget, we have approximately $65,000. So they are looking to do that in the spring, so we can anticipate them coming back and asking for additional funding. The bathrooms, we have $118,000 in our capital program, based on an estimate from the Board of Ed. After going through the bathrooms and having NAFIS and Young go through, because they are making some of them ADA compliant and some of them handicap, that cost has now approximately, it's about double. And they have 10 bathrooms that they're completing, so we can anticipate them probably coming back in our, in the current budget season, the upcoming budget season, requesting additional funding to complete the rest of the bathrooms. And the science labs, they also are going to be, that's a project for next summer, so they will be pulling out their bid specs from when they did the other science labs a few years ago and coming back to us. I believe there's money in there for the science lab. There's no cost for the science labs yet, so we're not quite sure what that is. We talked about the security grant, which they did receive the funding for everything they applied for. That work has to be completed by June 30 of 2015, so they are progressing forward with the security grant funding. And we also set the calendar for our meeting dates for next year, and we agreed to not meet every month. And there is, in the folder that was at your desk, there is a revised calendar. We basically have five meeting dates that we've established for next year, in addition to the one that we generally hold on in March, on the Saturday meetings with department heads. So we'll have six meetings with the Board of Ed. And we agreed on, agreed on that at committee last night, that those would be our meeting dates. That was it.
All right. Item D, Police Commission.
Yes, the police commission had a meeting yesterday, and as part of the meeting, there was a very nice ceremony and reception honoring retirees, our new Lieutenant Ripa, our new officers Brown and Marino, and new sergeants Lovely and Dewey. It was really a very nice event. Mike was there, the room was packed. It was really very, very, very well done. In addition to that, we've been spending a lot of time discussing the issue of safety of both the public and the police, and what's going on in this country and what's going on a couple times here in North Branford. And I've asked Police Commissioner Dave Palumbo to talk to, again, I brought this topic up last month, but he's got some more information about the safety issue.
How are you, everyone? Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, hope all of one is well, I hope everybody enjoyed their Thanksgiving, and thank you for taking some time, and I hope everyone got around today safe with the weather. As you know, Marie, I brought some things up to you guys last month, and I got this, we talked to Ripa last night in regards to body cams. You guys asked to put some stuff together for the next coming budget, you know, and all the events that are going on throughout the country. It was brought up again last night by Marie. And I asked Ripa to, yeah, giving us some numbers, I think you guys got numbers on the entire afternoon.
Okay, so do you.
Yeah, well, Mike, one extra.
Sure.
When I put this together at the office today, I got it late in the day. So I apologize a little bit, I've been out in meetings all day, and Ripa kindly enough got it to late in the day. Basically, in the chain of events that's happened in light of where the countries are today. You know, and we all know what's happened, and there's no reason to rehash it all, but a couple things it's going to do. You know, there's two incidents that just happened in North Branford three to four weeks ago. One in my own building, when we were getting broken into or robbed. And 12 hours earlier, on Sea Hill Road, at 2:30 in the morning, the incident of what happened there. I'm sure most of you are familiar with what transpired. And what I say is, we're looking at, we're looking at maybe eventually doing the whole department, with any luck. But certainly, we thought about perhaps doing four of these cameras and using them through the department. Getting four cameras, they're fairly, you know, inexpensive compared to doing the whole of the department, and possibly down the road, maybe there'll be some federal money to do the rest of the department. As you can see, Hampton got 30 or 40 of them allocated, North Haven got them allocated. Everybody's jumping on the bandwagon right now, departments across the United States. I look at it as just the two events that happened here in town. One, the Sea Hill Road event, was had we had body cameras in that incident, we would have surely seen the incident that happened where the cop got hit by the car. Almost got run off. So that's one incident, and if the incident at my place 12 hours later, 2:30 in the afternoon, with the two individuals that were there, and whatever altercations happened, it would have been, certainly, we don't have cameras in the car, but the body cameras would have enacted what they were doing, what happened, and what transpired. And I had thought, and Marie and I talked a little bit last night about it, obviously, it would cost a tremendous amount of money to do the whole department, maybe it'll be federal funding down the road. If we did four, and we, every shift, whether there's two, three, or four guys on, when they come on duty, they get their camera, they're responsible for their shift, at the end of their shift, they put it back in the docking station, and the next shift takes. Again, it's preliminary, because I got this late today. I got it literally, when I got back to my office at about 5 o'clock, and Lieutenant Ripa was kind enough to execute it and get it done today for us. So there are a couple options, there's a couple of ways of doing it, and I wanted to have the literature for you guys, so you at least can digest it, talk about it amongst yourselves, talk about it with us. Do I think it's going to be the way for the future? I do, by all the reports we get and see, I think the cameras in the cars will probably be a secondary, but I think the body cameras are going to be the way in the future for us, in the light of what happened throughout the country. Had the officer in Ferguson had it, they would have seen the chain of events that would have happened right then and there. Good, bad, or different. What it's going to do for us, it's going to, A, keep cops on the right track, and B, prevent lawsuits from us possibly having in the town, for altercations, things that might or might not happen. Or, if the officer's using it in the wrong way, could present a problem for him as well. So there's a lot of pros and cons to it. Certainly, for us, in the events that have just happened in the town then, and up into the last couple of weeks even, that are still going on, it certainly would give us more safety net for these officers. The two incidents that just happened that were arrested, and there's other investigations going on. Had we had them in the light of what's transpired in the last weeks after the incident at my place and the incident on Sea Hill Road, it would have enlightened us on more on what would have happened. But the ones that are going on today, in the investigation, had we had them, we probably could have solved a couple of incidents and cases. So Marie and I talked about it last night. I wanted to bring it forward to you guys, so you have a little bit of information on it, a little bit of thought from us at the department. I know that you guys were looking for a kind of a list over the course of years to come. This is one of them. You know, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but it's, they could get costly. I think Hampton just put on, I think they just, I talked to the chiefs there, and one of the guys, I think they got 30, and it cost them like 30 or 40, it cost them like 60 grand. But they got 110 guys. They've already done one wave several months ago, or a year ago. Now, after the enlightenment of what's happened in the country in the last months, they just did it, the council approved it for them for another. But yeah, they got 110 guys, we got 21.
I think the article said they have, now they have a total of like 75, between what they did and...
Yeah, 75 or 80, thereabouts. And it's only for the patrol. Obviously, we wouldn't put them on management, we wouldn't put them on, so they got 80 of them, or 75 of them on patrol, the rest of those guys are records room captains, lieutenants, that kind of stuff, so.
I think I heard today that there was going to be federal money for those cameras.
Yeah.
Some kind of thing like that, too.
I think there will be.
Hopefully, before the next budget.
Yeah, right, yeah. I would assume something's going to happen, just by what's happened within the country and events that are going on. But I thought, you know, there were some, there were some issues of, well, you know, how do we do four? How do we do three? How do we do one? How do we do 10? You do four, because we got three to four guys on shift. And every man's responsible for his, at the end of his day, at the end of his shift, unless he does a double, you turn him in, the next guy picks him up. And it'll keep our costs down, and certainly put some protection on the street for our guys. Especially, like I said, I hate to rehash those two events, but that was two events, 12 hours, like, almost to the minute. 2:30 in the morning and 2:30 in the afternoon. So that's my thoughts on it. Again, I didn't get a lot of chance to read this myself, because I got it at 5 o'clock from the department, when I got back to my office. So certainly, if you need more information, you want to talk more about it, we can talk more, I can get you more information if needed. I didn't ask the lieutenant to come, because he was trying to get this today, and I wasn't sure if he was going to pull it off. He did. I told Marie at 6 o'clock I had it, and, you know, certainly, I think he'd be more than happy to come at the next meeting if it goes that way.
And I think the thing, the thing that's important here is, what costs the most is the data, you know, storing the data after the camera. It's not so much the camera, it's the storage of the data, and you can see, there is, there would be a yearly fee on that.
Yeah, there's a yearly fee for these four, at $1,200 a year.
But I think, you know, going, starting with four would be a good way, at least we'd have, for the people that are on duty each night.
Well, if it prevents us from one large lawsuit, it'd be worth the money we spend probably.
Well, you know...
Even better if we get federal money.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think there would, and that's why I said to Marie last night, why go for all? Let's go for three or four, that it'll get us started on the next best thing to waiting for federal money. It's a small investment to certainly prevent catastrophic lawsuits, and certainly, the safety of the government that's wearing, especially what's just happened in our own community, never mind across the country. So, you know, the biggest thing is, yeah, there's a yearly cost of $1,200 for now, at the four that we have, so.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Dave.
And I appreciate your time and effort. And if you've got any questions, feel free to ask, or if you have any for the next meeting, let me know, and I wish everybody a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Same to you, Dave.
Thanks.
Do you want to leave, Joe?
It says he wants three hours of charge.
God, I did.
I think it goes up to nine hour, either down, nine hour charge.
Good point, I didn't know that.
Item seven, town managers' report. Item A, presentation of new town website.
Yeah, we've been working on the technology, and if you don't mind, we'll use the, we'll use the projector and give you a live demonstration of the design at this point in time. Anthony and Dennis have been working to recreate a new look for the town page. And just remember, it's a work in progress. We're getting closer, but didn't want to go too far until we get some feedback in terms of looking at it.
I'll get a popcorn.
Yeah.
Does anybody know why these are taped, some of these lights?
For the camera.
The camera people. Meaning what, they don't want them on? Yeah, they want them on.
Okay, so as Mike had alluded to, the website that we currently have has been probably the same format for probably close to seven to 10 years. And one of the things about your web presence is you should keep refreshing, get to keep it fresh, and solve any problems that you currently have. So I want to start off with where we are currently, at our current website. And you see, typically, in the center is where the list just goes on and on and on of anything that's new, and that's how we update it currently, which tends to look kind of clumsy. What we're looking to do is to change, and again, as Mike mentioned, this is a work in process, so excuse some of the text, but what's going to change is, the center section will be fixed. And you're going to have a calendar, a scrolling calendar on one side, and the latest news that we need to change will show up on the right side, again, in a scrolling situation. Couple neat features on the new, on the new website. The town calendar, you can sign up, and you'll see at the bottom, this RSS feed means basically it can kick it out to you if you sign up for notification purposes. So what does that mean? That means if you come back to this main page and you sign up for newsletters, let's say you have an interest in the fire commission, or police commission, or whatever, or planning and zoning, whatever happens to get you interested. Subscribe, there's not many out here now, again, this is still being created, but what are you interested in? General news, town council, planning and zoning, economic development, there'll be a whole laundry list of things out here that you could sign up for at your leisure from your house, so that whenever a new item is put out in planning and zoning, whether it's an agenda or minutes, you could get that as an email. So again, it's to try to be more transparent, try to get the word out to the residents of things that are of interest to them. Again, the same kind of pictures across the top, the character of the town, some of our new buildings, a cow, I guess, and it looks like Shant's barn over there in the far left. What's left of it. Another thing that's new, that's good about this is, because this is live and on the web, when we had the storm a couple years back, and we were sitting up at the police station as our EOC, we couldn't, you can't make changes to the current website unless you're in this building, because it's stored on the network drive and it's uploaded to the internet. With this, anywhere you have internet access, you can make changes. So if Mike, 10 o'clock at night says, Anthony called me, Anthony, change the website, we're canceling the meeting, whatever the case happens to be, does a storm come, jump on the computer, boom, 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 done. So it allows you the flexibility of anywhere in the world you have internet access to make changes to the website, put in the latest news or things like that. Another neat feature is the Find Us, Regulation and Code. What's going to happen, we think, on Regulation and Code piece, is this is through a product called E360, or General Code. Below the word index, you're going to see the word minutes, or public documents is going to be called. And what's going to happen is, we're going to be, put our minutes, instead of doing a section for the police commission and fire commission and town council, and such and such and such, and each page, and having links and so on, by using this product we're already paying for, it'll simplify the process and hopefully expedite the process. Also, by putting it up as Word documents, right now, we take, you put it as PDF, so you can't alter it. But a PDF is a picture. If you put it up as a Word document, it becomes a Word searchable document. So if you're interested in traffic, pick a topic, you type in the word traffic, and you type that word traffic up here, and it's a town council minutes, it'll come up to you. So by, again, by going into a Word format and making it Word searchable, it gives the end users some more flexibility, some additional benefits, versus currently, it's just basically a PDF, a picture of the current set of minutes. And again, they have access like they do now to the town charter and the town code online. We're trying to work, we're still working with Dennis, trying to get some more of the code. We're trying to get this background that you see currently as a green format, to get more purple. You see that the buttons are now purple, the language here is purple. We're looking to get that radiant, that gradient color in the back to be purple, again, to try to tie into, you know, town colors and purple and white. But again, some neat features, the latest news, we'll clean it up, instead of being, you know, messy in the middle over here, this kind of has a nice scrolling. Nice thing about this, too, you can set a date range. So this meeting this year says, okay, it's closed December 24th and 25th. You can set that, so that, and that goes away, December 26th. You can set that, so that on that, it goes away December 26th. So once you, right now, on the old way, you have to go in there, set it, then go in, make sure you remove it, and sometimes it doesn't happen in a timely fashion, people are out sick, whatever the case happens to be. The other one, like this election thing's been out there since the election. Do people still care about that now? Probably not. You know, well, honestly. So you can make that live for maybe a week or so, and then kick it back, so that it goes away into like an archive situation. But the calendar, anything that's on that calendar in the back will flow to the scrolling calendar, the latest news will be updated. Again, a lot cleaner versus muddying at that first page, and then, like you said, the verbiage in the center will remain static. A welcome, maybe a picture of the town council, of Mike, contact you if you want to, you know, get into the emails. Again, tabs across the top, and he's got to fix those, but government, town council, but that one's a little separate. Basically gives you the rundown, who we are, folks on the town council, and again, anything that's, again, there's only three things out there currently, those would be all populated with the rest of the apartments. And there would be probably a link on here to your specific minutes, but again, it's all going to be living in that Ecode 360 platform now, and not on our own website theoretically. Directions, what he's going to do with directions is for every town building, put like a Google situation, so say my local Public Works is, you're coming from another town, you want to get to the police station or Public Works, or wherever you want to get to, something that loads. This is a little old piece, a little old laptop, but it's come. Take my work board, it's there. Public Works hasn't moved. But that'll be all the buildings, the schools, everything else will be on there as well, so you can get back to all the directions to all the buildings through Google, get information, emergency notification, I hope all of you have signed up for the new Code Red. It's out there, if you haven't, just go on and register, that's our new reverse 911 product. Make sure you have everything out there for that. Forms library, I don't know what he's put out there yet, but it's a building permit, electoral permit. Building permit, we all know, has the online, so we'll open that up, it'll be burning. So again, the goal is to make this more beneficial to the person sitting at home, they could fill out these forms ahead of time, bring them in, and save some steps in the office. Just wanted to show you where we were currently and explain some of the neat features that we have going on with it, to hopefully simplify the process, make the town government more transparent, and better for the end user. We'll get, we'll bring it back as we get more concrete information on there and some more things to show you. Any comments or questions or things you want to have changed, or?
I just have a question in regards to the minutes. Like, how soon will they be posted after a meeting? Are you doing just approved minutes, or are you going to?
No, we do the, as they come in, we do those. We do the, as they're submitted. By doing it as a Word document, whenever Kristen, let's say, gives her minutes in, we can put them right up right then and there, immediately. And then, there's never, they would be amended in a subsequent meeting, you have to actually read them to show that they were amended, we put maybe a footnote or some kind of star on them, see, you know, subsequent meeting for correction or whatever, but I think even now, what's put up there is the minutes as they're submitted initially. No changes are made in those documents, it's on the following month or following meeting where you might see it was a change, they're not, it's the initial minutes, not the approved ones, if that's what you mean.
Well, yeah, so how are people going to know if they're their approved minutes or not? Because some, you know, commissions could take a couple months, because if they don't have a quorum, or the right people aren't there, the minutes are done, but they might not approve them for three to six months afterwards, and also the timeframe, if they cancel some meetings in between. So how would the residents know if they're approved minutes or unapproved minutes?
We'd have to tag it, I think. We'd have to tag it as unapproved.
Yeah, I think right now, it's as they're submitted, so.
Just tag them approved or unapproved, right?
Right, right.
Let's take the town council now.
There has to be some kind of notation on it.
Right, well, the 12, 9 here is the meeting to be done for tonight, 11, 4.
Yeah, the Board of Ed has a separate, they have a separate section, one says unapproved minutes, and they stay up there until they're approved, and then they move down to their approved section. I don't know if you can do that with that other program that you're talking about, where they can search them.
Yeah, I'm probably good.
I mean, because there's our PDFs also, I mean, that's the other thing, theirs is just taking a picture of what's submitted in the PDF.
It's kind of ugly looking, dude, you look at it and it comes up kind of choppy and everything else. You know, it kind of, it kind of leads the way into a conversation that a lot of towns are going down of, do you need a, I want to call it a webmaster, but a technology person? You know, a lot of towns have Facebook pages to send notifications out as to the residents, they do Twitter accounts, websites, updates, things like that. Are we getting to the point where you need somebody who that's their job, part-time basis, obviously, not in, obviously a full-time job? But as things get more technologically savvy, you probably need someone who could be your web, your social media, whatever you want to call it, type person, to ensure that things are done in a timely fashion and all the various platforms that are out there. We have a Facebook page and a Twitter through the emergency management section, but the town doesn't, but many towns are using Facebook and Twitter as a way to get different information out, and we're not. So we're working on it again, and then the minutes, we can look at that approved versus unapproved, and then figure out a way to flag them, so that there's no confusion that they are the initial unapproved minutes, and then subsequently they'll be approved and amended if need be, that sort of thing.
Okay.
We can make it work. We have the technology.
Well, it's certainly an improvement over what we've had, so.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing.
To give you a brief, just a 30 second thing, what happens initially on this first current scenario, this meeting, let's say, for November 4th, the minutes come in from the clerk, you have to scan them in, create a PDF, run the local drive, you then have to load, upload the local drive to the internet drive. Then you have to go back to the town council page, create a new link, then go upload that page to the internet, because you changed the internet page there, then create a link from the link you created to that file that you scanned in. It's about a 10-step process, then save the whole thing and upload it again. It's a pain. So our hope is with this new methodology, the Ecode 360, we're already paying for it, it's out there, it's better for the end user, it makes Word searchable, and it should be a lot smoother and a lot quicker, to your point, Rose, about getting these things up there.
Okay. Because I know there's, there's regulations as far as how soon the minutes have to be filed with the town clerk.
Correct.
There's a timeframe, so I know she has them in a timely matter, it's just getting them posted onto the website, which seems to have been the holding, the block. It's not that they weren't filed, that they were filed, it's just getting them on the website.
You are 100% correct. We're working on, hopefully, a different solution that'll make it a lot simpler. And again, just hopefully this background will be purple, to tie into the purple color, darker and then fade to lighter on top. So the neat features of being able to amend it from anywhere you have internet access is neat, the newsletters, the residents can sign up for things that are of interest to them is a neat function, just some nice things, trying to pick up some different changes, and kind of cleaned it up a little bit, got kind of sloppy over the years, and by having the latest news as a one scrolling situation versus a, you know, I'd go, I'd go zoom down the center of the page, it makes it a lot neater. Oh, this thing's still loading the address, still trying to get the public works.
I think so. You can move over the center, so you're not at the wrong.
Okay.
Seems dark.
It does.
It does.
Water might come out. Might dodge it.
Isn't it dark?
Seems like it is.
It seems a little.
Is there a dimmer switch?
Yeah, they're all dimmed.
Oh, there you go.
Little cloudy in here.
Yeah.
I know, I know. I want to really go on it.
So now, if you touch it, the water comes out, what happens when I touch it? We don't want to go there.
Yes.
Item B, CMed update.
Yeah, I wish I had more information in the report, other than, you know, the meeting is going to take place, I put the agenda in your packet, just to point out the fact that item three is one of the wild cards, so to speak. It's a report on the committee on the consolidation with other CMeds, so the group had formed a subcommittee to go and pursue that, and I'm not, you know, I won't hear that report until Thursday. That's, you know, potentially something important that could strengthen and enhance the organization in terms of its future livelihood, if they can work out something. One of the, I guess, I think one of the options in there is something they've looked at in the past in terms of, if not consolidation, maybe even a relocation or co-location with potentially West Haven as an option, that would create a center that could be eligible for additional state funding, which would help the organization as well. So those are some of the things that the organization is pursuing and would know, would hear their report on Thursday. What I'm doing also is, I've reached out to Valley Shore, to Rich Darden, to talk to him about potentially if CMed isn't a viable option going forward, would we be able to look at their operation or their organization for services for the medical patch in terms of CMed services? So I'm keeping all those options open and pursuing and see what, you know, what happens on Thursday with their report, and then, you know, we'll bring it back to the, to town council. You know, they have a deadline of, sort of the line in the sand of identifying whether you're going to come, you know, stay to the table for December 31st, but we don't meet until, next meeting's not until January, unless, you know, they wanted to meet in a special meeting, but the drop deadline in terms of moving out of the organization would be June 30th, July 1st timeframe. So there is still time, once this organization figures out who's going to stay and who's I was, as you see on the agenda, had an action item on the unfinished business, 11D, that was just anticipation that you might want to consider rescinding the vote on CMed, but that's premature. At this point, I'd say we hold off on everything, wait until the dust settles, and see where the other larger cities are going to be in this organization. That really is going to determine, I think, where the rest of us fall. And I won't know until Thursday or sometime after that. So unfortunately, I wish I had more solid information to report, but again, it's just down to the wire with this organization to figure out who's in and who's out.
What towns are left?
Well, New Haven is still in with West Haven, North Haven, just about all of the big ones with Hamden, although Meriden did leave, Meriden was a big one that left. Other than that, no one else has had formal pullout, if you will. But again, Thursday may, may have concrete decisions from some of them. I mean, some of the other, the valley towns had pulled up, some of the smaller, smaller towns had left, but essentially, it still functions with that 30% reduction, if everybody stays who's currently in. Any more start to fall out, then it's like a house of cards.
And what's presently, what's the number of dispatchers they have?
I think it's down to eight, but I'll double check that.
Because at one time, what did they have, like 16 or?
I think they were closer to 14.
14.
Right, that's a work in progress. You know, at the last meeting, Rose had indicated that we should include the fields, we are, we've reached out, the Board of Education has responded, our departments, I'm waiting for a few more to respond with in terms of their space needs and capacity and condition of buildings. Michelle Mockwood is the point person on that, she's putting together sort of the, you have a snapshot of a draft RFP that we're using as the template. I anticipate we'll have the rest of the responses by the end of this week, and hopefully she can finish that up for next week and get that out on the street as quickly as possible. Figuring there'll be a, probably a 30-day, maybe, I think a 30-day response window should be adequate, and that way we'll have a response in time for the budget process.
Al, you were on the council, right, when they did a facility study?
Several times. Yeah, I mean.
Because I know we have one, that's not, was it from?
I guess they're moving to Oregon, but.
Lack of facilities too.
You know, when you look at this, and you see, you have the information that the fire department's giving them. Now, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the fire department own their own buildings?
Three fire companies, yeah. Only the ambulance building is a town building.
Okay. So other than the ambulance building, the town has no say what's done with the fire department buildings. You know, it's like, the best way to never ever do anything is to keep sending it to committee and having it studied, and I'm sure that Franny Marola can tell us what he needs to do at Public Works a lot better than some firm that's going to read this document, going to get selected, we're going to give them 15 to $50,000, and we might as well just throw it out on the street, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just one of you, I've seen these things before. Some of them are, some of the suggestions are almost comical, but, you know, I guess it's what, it's what towns do, but I, I can tell you right now, I don't care who gets picked or anything, I'm going to vote against spending any money on a facility study, because, number one, we're running out of kids in the state of Connecticut, so if anything, they should come back and tell us we need to close another school. You know, it's like, you know, and they always come back and they tell you, oh, you need a new high school, you need a new administration office, you need a new police department. You know, that, I mean, you know what, we could, every department head could tell us that already, so I don't know why we need to spend any money to have some architectural firm that's never stepped foot in this town, take all the information from our department heads, you know what, if the department heads want something, come tell us. But that's just, that's just where I am on facility studies. So, you know, I mean, I, I guess, you know, and that's the thing, once a ball starts rolling, you can never stop it, but, you know, I guess there's no hurt in letting it go forward and seeing what it would cost to have some group tell us what we're probably not going to do.
What happened in the past when you had facilities, anything ever done?
We pretty much never did any. Never did any. I mean, come on. They're going to come and tell you, you need all of these things, and we don't have the money to do it. Yeah, I mean, we have no money.
How about when you don't have a facility, is that part of the facility study?
Right.
Like, no garage for the police cars, I'm always.
Right, and that's a good point, I mean, I think the issue, I think, my take is that this has come to light because of the fact that we're looking at, you know, excess bond funds that we'll talk about later in the, in the agenda, but also your bond indebtedness dipping in '17, '18, and that this is an opportunity to look at future planning and organizational. You know, and Benny keeps, not here tonight, but he keeps raising the issue of the municipal campus and. raising the issue of the municipal campus, and he keeps talking about police, which these are known factors that, you know, potentially, do we, great, we've got a great facade of a police department, but in terms of internally, the building's a mess. And, and do we, do we address, do we use this facility study to address those issues and think forward to future planning of that, given the fact that it might match up with the debt service? And then it's just prioritizing and figuring out, yeah, what can, what can the town afford? I, I think it's a, probably a useful exercise. And maybe we have to, Al, maybe we have to pare it down. Maybe it's too much. Maybe it's too large.
So you guys know where I am on this. So about 10 years ago, we doubled our debt. We went from carrying a $3 million debt to a $6 million debt. And so, and I was just looking at that in 2017, 18 now, or whatever, it's back to 3 million. And with what the economy has done, and, and what the state of Connecticut has done, and these are facts, Michael, and you know if you'd spent some time in town, we're, we're one of the highest debt per capita towns in the state of Connecticut. Okay? So instead of living with a $3 million debt service, you want to spend it already before we've even gotten it back. And I guess, guess what? The town of North Branford can only afford the $3 million debt service every year. We couldn't afford 6 million. Because since it went to 6 million, we haven't been able to buy police cars, we haven't been able to fix our roofs, and everything else. We can't afford more debt. None of us can at our homes, and we need a town manager that understands that. We don't, this isn't magic money. We, we, I'm seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. Wow, we're going to get back down to only owing $3 million a year on our debt instead of five or six. Instead of saying, okay, 16, 17, we dropped $2 million on our debt service, let's spend it now. But again, you know, I'm only one of us up here, and, you know, I, I won't be changing my mind on it. I'm going to say, if the police department's a wreck inside, the police commission could just come say, hey, we got to, we got to start and remodel the room and paint and remodel the bathrooms or whatever. And something like that, I'm all ears.
Couldn't be shut any better, Al.
Hey, take the freaking money from the architect and fix the freaking rooms that need fixing. But again, you know, I, facility, everybody in the business world knows, if you want something to die, send it to committee. And a facility study is a waste of money. But again, I have no problem with you wasting architects' time. Maybe they're going to get five votes to, to waste some more money. So...
Maybe we could look at the previous one that was just done in, I think, 2002.
I don't know when it was done. But I mean, you know, since 1989, we've done at least, at least three. So, or talked about doing. You know, it's, we, we don't have, we don't have the money. And, and again, our debt per capita is one of the highest in the state. I'm embarrassed to being part of this town council for as many years as I was when I see that statistic. But, we can't solve that tonight.
Well, maybe we should ask to see the one, the previous one.
Yeah, that'd be a good starting point.
As a starting point.
Previous one was done by the Board of Education, only didn't include town buildings.
Didn't include town buildings at all?
Called for additions to all the schools.
Of course it did.
Called the new middle school that obviously they had.
New high school.
I believe, probably, I don't remember the exact.
How about the one before that?
There was no, there was only, I don't know if you're talking about the one for the study of Valley Park. I mean, we bought that.
The Swatch, the Swatch search?
Yeah. We didn't have any facility study for town parks.
I guess the purpose of the, is a facility study the right vehicle to, to actually look to the future of, you know, to make a municipal campus, whatever. I mean, maybe the facility study isn't what we want. Maybe we want something that's, that's more directed at that. Because I agree, why waste money for something we're not going to do? I mean, you know, there's never, it's pointless. But I think there is value in looking, you know, we do have a lot of, in, you know, 30 years from now, it may be nice to have a municipal campus, if we could get from here to there in a way that's reasonable.
Yeah, I just, if you want to pull the plug, pull the plug. I mean, I don't need to go through an exercise that we're, we're not going to do. You want to save the money, save the money. If it's in, and go on a case-by-case basis and, and review project by project, you know?
Well, how about using Al's idea and having each department head submit something? Just facility, not, you know, everything else, but facility. Have each department head do it.
I, I think they all know what they need.
Maybe there could be some kind of a form and they all, you know, complete it.
Yeah, we could just turn it all internal, and then...
I, I think we should try to stay somewhat internal rather than, I mean, if we're, because I, I, like Al, I've been on the council for many years too, and I've seen at least two of these facility studies. Nothing was ever done with them. I mean, it, it's like a wish list, is what it ends up becoming, you know?
Again, they come up with some great ideas. Don't get me wrong. They have some great ideas. We, we have no money.
I mean, look at, we're looking, I mean, we're already at almost 30 for a mil rate. I mean, we got to start thinking of what we're going to do to stay where we are. And we're going to price a lot of people out of this town. It's a real problem we're looking at. It's just my opinion.
Well, if you, if it's a consensus, I'll, you know, just, we'll pull it back and put it on hold. And then create some, more of an internal targeted type of review and assessment, and prioritize in terms of, you know, capital projects. And almost say, you know, ones that are critical and, and need to, and maybe they're not full buildings. Maybe they are just, you know, renovating a room, fixing the, you know, fixing a bathroom, fixing, you know, something. You know, we can go on a case-by-case basis that way, until we get a better handle in terms of where the spike is going.
But I know, I do know that, you know, Vinnie, it's a big push for it. And so maybe we just, maybe we table it so we can have more of a discussion on it and hear his side. I mean, having said everything that I just said, not only am I embarrassed of the debt service, I'm embarrassed of this building being an old New England towns town hall. And that's why if you look further enough, far enough back in the record, you'll see that when I was sitting here, I voted down buying this at least twice. It just kept coming back until it had the votes to be bought up here. But I'm telling you, this is not, this is a great building if you're a rock quarry. This is not a New England town hall. So, so...
It's a place that could be economically developed in a way that's more, I mean, we have, this is a building that has a good location. I mean, it could be, we could develop this in a way and bring taxes.
And, and you know what, maybe?
I mean, offices don't make any money. I mean, this is a, I mean, I think there's a lot of value in what, what Vinnie's saying, just in terms of coming up with a long-range plan. But it sounds like a facility study isn't the way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, yeah, like you say, I mean, we might need to have a 15- or 20-year plan on where we want to be as a town, and, and what we want to look like. But I don't know that hiring an architect to do a facility study is the answer to that question, you know? And I would agree.
I think, I think that I agree with what, what Donnie just said, you know? And I'm not, I'm just not sure that, that an architect for a facility study, and maybe that is the avenue, but, you know, where do we want to be in 15 years? And then how do we get there? So, you know, are, are, I don't know whether we're even going to outgrow this building or not outgrow this building. Maybe this is too much building. So, but we definitely need to know where we want to be in 15 to 20 years. And then figure out how to get there. So, I guess, so now I'm arguing for a facility study.
But maybe there's something else. I mean, there has to be a way to get, to figure out what people want. I mean, with the economic development, we did the shred process, it's been a long process, but we have a pretty good sense of what, you know, what people want. And then actually, there's been some agreement, you know, it's just been a process that everyone has been able to be involved in. Facility study where we give, the department heads give money, or give information to a group that has no concern about North Branford as a people or a town or community, to give us recommendations that we're not going to do, it sounds like a waste of time.
Yeah, that's, that's my point. I'd rather have them tell, tell us or...
I'd rather the community or someone tell us, what do they want? What do people want? And then, so we can make the hard decisions. Because, you know, either we get economic development or, or we raise taxes. There's no, there's no other option. So, we get more debt, which, these are not good options, so.
Okay, so where are we?
So is it a consensus of the council then to hold off on the request for, you know, not put this forward? Because there's no sense in having all the department heads do the work for this request for proposal if we're not going to go forward with it.
Could we table, I think it would be good to hear what Vinnie, Vinnie says, because I respect what he has to say. He's been here a long time, and I'd like to just...
Yeah, let's table it then.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table a facility study review till the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Fucy, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call. Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Ross?
Yes.
Item D, public informational meeting proposal.
Yeah, this, we, I put this, we put this on hold. Al had missed the last meeting, and it was one of those things that came up.
I thank you for that.
And so I brought it back, and it's actually on later in the, or actually, it's not on the agenda, so you'd have to amend the agenda if you wanted to take action. But this is the, this is the concept, this is the idea. I've identified community mediation to, to help us. It's, it's one idea. It's one way you can go. They're out there, they're from Hamden, they could come in and, you know, do these two sessions as a, you know, neutral facilitator, and create a public process around this. If you feel it's worthy of investment, worthy to do, that's one way to go.
Where are you guys on this?
Well, far be it for me to speak for you, Al, but I think what you were looking for was more of like a session, like maybe some people from the state talking, you know, the pros and the cons of propane, rather than a mediation session.
And I think, so, so I did talk to Michael Summ, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but basically, gee, I'll, I'll put words in their mouth. Everybody he talked to wants to stick their head in the sand and not come down and talk to us. But, I mean, people from the state told you they really don't do that?
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know. I mean, again, as John had made it clear to us, we can't do anything with the results of this meeting. So, do you spend $1,300 to have a meeting that we can't do anything with? And you want to fill in on some of the...
And you can still, yeah, you can still have a representative, say, from, who would be willing and is willing on, on the propane industry to do it. But we couldn't get anybody at the state level in a sort of a neutral fashion to come down and say, okay, I'm the state fire marshal, I'll have jurisdiction, and I'll come in and help facilitate. They don't have the skill sets to do that, nor do they want to be in a position where they're going to try and facilitate or mediate a, a session. But you'd have a propane side, and you'd have, you know, the other side in terms of the attorney, or whoever, whoever they wanted to bring in terms of arguing the other side, the, the, both sides of the issue. So you could have that with this trained facilitator, mediator, basically running in a two-session format, that they are trained in what's what they do. It's the best I could come up with at, at this point. But it does...
The likelihood of achieving something in a two-hour, two-session mediation is pretty remote.
Yeah.
There's very strong feelings on both sides of this, this issue, and I don't think you're going to cut through them in four hours, even with a professional mediator.
Right.
Right now, our destiny is really in the hands of the State Department of Environmental Protection, and then it's going, going to come back here. I don't know what a mediator can do with the current proposal. We do know that we have the ability to change our own regulations going forward, to either restrict or provide for more public notice, mandate public hearings, change the zoning process from site plan approval to a special use permit, that would require some input from the public, we're giving them the opportunity. Those things can be done on any future application. This application, I think, is, is pretty much, it's set on its own course. And with, whatever way it goes, it's largely going to be dictated by the state of Connecticut at this point, not by a mediator.
Right.
And also, I've been attending the last couple planning and zoning meetings, just to see what's, what is going on and to listen. And I will tell you that the, the group of residents that have formed, they actually, at the last planning and zoning meeting, have, they're formulating a proposal for changes in, in the current regulations. And it will, they're looking at going down to a public hearing to have text change in it to address some of those exact issues that you...
I think it was in the register just this week. I think they were filing something.
Right. So, so they're moving forward with what they want to do. So I kind of agree with you, Joe, in that I don't think mediation is, is going to work.
It's not enough mediation.
Right.
I've, I've been in mediations, and where there are people that are extremely polarized, as they are here, four hours just is not going to do it.
So I don't think we should waste the money.
Item E, MBIS draft audit report from Department of Administrative Services.
Yes, I, I put that in there just to give you an idea. You know, Anthony and, and Michelle Knockwood have been working on this, and it basically outlines a worst-case scenario with respect to what the state would be looking for coming back to the state. And like I said, Anthony and Michelle are, are working to whittle that number down, so.
Yeah, as you can see from her report, the, the Part II summary statement, the worst-case scenario, her report's calling that we would owe the state back $263,000. You recall, there was like roughly $5 million. We've spent a good chunk of that, roughly half of that, if not more, on the TVES roof allocation, the high school roof allocation, some other capital projects. But rest assured, the 263 number, we feel is rather false. Some of the numbers that she's calling for, we're not sure where she's coming up with them, and we're in the process of rebutting various parts of her argument. And we have to have a response back to her, I believe it's this Friday, a written response, or ask for an extension. But that number will go down significantly. But the worst-case scenario is, is relatively good news, but it's not going anywhere near that when all is said and done.
Community events and presentations. Item nine, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Item A, invitation from Senator-elect Kennedy regarding open office hours.
Yeah, that was just in his informational point. But he'll be having office hours at, at Water on December 13th. In addition to various other locations within the district, but he'll be at, at Water Public Library on December 13th from 11:30 to 1:00.
Item 10, resignations and appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add two additional reappointments.
I'll second it.
What are the reappointments for?
Reappointments for the Police Commission of Dave Palumbo and Andrew Esposito.
Oh. Yeah, Joe's seconded. Joe's seconded.
Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaora?
Uh, yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
No.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
No.
Resignation.
Well, that was, that was to amend the agenda.
Right.
Right.
Now it's on the agenda. So now you're voting to appoint these individuals.
Now it's on the agenda. So now you're voting to appoint these individuals.
Well...
We, we can take them in any order the mayor wants to...
Well, right, I just...
Yeah, it's going down.
Okay.
Item A through...
Okay.
All right, resignation, Frank A. Bargano from the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Move to accept the resignation.
Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, seconded by Council Haskins. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item B, resignation Elizabeth Kaplan from the library board.
Move to accept.
Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, uh, seconded by Council Diamond. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Appointment Frank A. Bargano to Inland Wetlands, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen.
I make a motion to appoint Frank A. Bargano to Inland Wetlands, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Haskins. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item D, reappointment Mary Bigelow to Greater New Haven Transit District, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll move to appoint her.
Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, seconded by Council Diamond. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item E, reappointment Deborah Anderson to Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll move the appointment.
Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, seconded by Council Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item F, reappointment Elizabeth Bussard to Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Angeloni, uh, seconded by Council Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item G, reappointment Michael Martin to Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll move the appointment.
Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, uh, seconded by Council Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Uh, yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item H, reappointment Hank Protowski to Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
I make a, item I, I make a motion to reappoint David Palumbo to the police commission for a term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Moved by Council Diamond, seconded by Council Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item J, I move to reappoint Anthony Esposito.
Anthony?
Andrew Esposito, sorry.
Unless you want to...
To the police commission for a term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Moved by Council Diamond, seconded by Council Haskins. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Abstain.
Council Angeloni?
No.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Abstain.
What was that final vote, Council?
Four.
Four, one, two.
Four, one, two abstentions.
Four, one, two.
Three. So it needs five votes to carry, doesn't it?
Correct.
Unfinished business, discussion in action, update to defined benefit plan documents, police union table July ninth, two thousand and twelve. Item B, approval of contract with Ton Hibbert of Hibbert Rosa Architects for architectural services related to the Totucket Valley Elementary School roof projects.
John, did you get a contract and see it?
Yes, and I made comments, and they're, it's in the hands of the architect now to make the changes.
So there is no contract approved at this point?
No. The contract that I looked at had problems. They were conveyed to the architect through the town manager, and he is making changes to the contract.
Okay. All right, so Mike, can you talk to the architect? Because it was the understanding of the building committee at the November meeting that he would still continue, he would start the work, because now there is the issue of getting state approval, getting it out to bid, and having it ready to go for June. And if there's no contract signed yet, has any of that work started, and what does that do to our timeframe?
Uh, I know, so I just want to ask John if we could, if, if the architect, I saw John's email, so I know he's sent, or we, I saw John's, we forwarded off to the architect. If the architect takes all of those comments and incorporates, would we make a motion or subject to that happening, and then we execute?
Well, the motion at the last meeting was we approved it subject to the approval of the town attorney.
And there is a contract. He submitted a con, he did it, he submitted an AIA contract, and the changes that I proposed, must be six or eight of them, are not, they don't cut to the core of the contract. So my, my belief is that he's, there shouldn't be a problem. So if you, you know, so I think that original motion is what the town manager's saying.
Is valid?
Still stands, yeah. I mean, if he calls, if I get a call tomorrow saying, okay, we're going to make those changes, then it's a deal.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I would imagine he would make, I, I don't see any of the changes as deal breakers.
Okay. Can you just follow up with that, just so that we can see what the timeline is on that? Thank you.
Sure.
We do. We, we have, that's what I looked at.
So we did, but our motion at the last meeting was we approved it subject to the approval.
So it's in place, all we need is for the architect to agree to your requested changes, and it's a done deal.
Yeah, right. I think the last time we were here, we got a letter.
Right.
That, it was my comment saying that that's not a contract.
Correct.
And in the interim, a contract, a standard form contract was submitted from, from my review, and, which we did. And I, as I said, I had maybe six or eight comments, which I think are not going to be difficult for him to, if he has a problem, we'll talk about it. But I, I would expect that this could be turned around this week.
So it can be discussed with you if he chooses to, or he just makes the changes?
Yeah, the condition that you...
You don't have to take any further action.
No, the council doesn't, because the condition you attached was it's just subject to my approval, which is pending.
Yes, he's, that, that was the direction the council gave him was to look at a pitched roof, and he had said that there are three or four areas that are very conducive to a pitched roof. So that is part of what his rendition will be.
And I think we discussed putting it in as those ad alternates for bidding it out that way.
Well, just so that we can see the difference between if it was strictly a flat roof, or if it was, let's say, comes out to be a fifty-fifty, fifty percent pitched and fifty percent flat, what the difference in cost is. And then ultimately, it would be the decision of the council to decide if we're going to go through with that funding.
So we need a motion on this?
We, we don't need a motion out. We all don't.
All right, item C, approval of Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee meeting schedule for two thousand and fifteen.
Last night at our subcommittee meeting, because we don't approve any other committee's meeting agenda, the committee itself had decided on our meeting dates, which there is a corrected copy at your desk, and it was the five meetings that we talked about, or what I talked about earlier. So I believe there's...
Which is more than adequate, because half of our meetings get postponed or canceled anyway.
Right. So the committee had decided on this, so I don't think there's any action from the council to take on this, nor is the...
I wouldn't think so.
Or the Board of Ed is not taking action on it. We just agreed that those were our meeting dates.
Discussion on membership of, to C-MED, I think we kind of covered that already.
Right, right, no action.
Okay, item E, Fowler Road update, and this was on the agenda. Council Road, we carried it over seeing that you were...
Well, I know that, you know, several of us have been getting complaints on, on this, of what's going on back there. So, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I, you know...
There's a report for the plan in our package.
Right, I did see, I did see that.
Yeah, it was part of the agenda.
So I know that, so Kurt, you reported back, what did, what did, what was your report at the last meeting on this? I know you had gone out there.
Yeah, Carrie had done the initial report. Basically, there's a memo in here. The last paragraph is, is sort of a subsequent, subsequent to that meeting. She's had some complaints from an interested person regarding potentially material coming in into the site. She walked in, and then basically she, she talked to the owner in terms of, they're basically saying there's nothing that was brought in, there was material on site that they, that's, there's some bricks and some piles, there's a little bit of, there's some asphalt. There's not piles of bricks, there's not piles of asphalt. There's some material that I did see in there when I talked to her. So basically, at this point, it's being monitored. The, there's a, there's a timeframe to remove material. It's part of their step two phase approval from Plan and Zoning Commission. And, and the bulk of it is, through this whole process, is material, first, first step, sixty thousand yards, I believe, biggest concern was trucks and, and tracking of roads. And they've done a pretty good job of that. We've had some complaints, but the advocate was, was pretty good in that. The next phase there was, biggest concern was blasting, because a lot of rock they have to go, and then go off the site. And that's, we've, we've had complaints about that, the fire marshal has, but for the most part, I'm not going to say, um, they've been in compliance, I think they've been in compliance with the fire marshal in terms of everything. It may have been a weekend activity that we had to put it into. But I would say overall, for the size of the site, it hasn't been all that bad. I'm not going to say they're perfect, but generally that's sort of in a nutshell. And again, there's, there's phases and steps that were approved by Plan and Zoning, and they're sort of working through it. The, the initial phases are basically removing material off site and preparation grading of the property. So that, that's where things are now. The good thing is, we do, for the addition of the town planner zoning force, and all, so we have other bodies to try to keep an eye on things and, and to monitor things at this point. So, that's where we are at this point.
I, I happen to be that interested party. Is it already as I approach and make this presentation or to make this distribution?
If no one on the council objects, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
My name is Patrick Rolland, and I have a whole host of beautiful pictures that I'm going to provide to all of you. And in doing so, I've made everybody a neat little dump drive for you to take home. If the neat guy with the camera would like to put them on your screen, you're welcome to do that, but I also have printed out copies for everybody. So they're PDFs of every one of the pictures. I'll give them to the town attorney as well as to the recording secretary as well. And the neat thing about photographs that are taken on both a camera and a cell phone is they have a geo locator. So anybody who actually wants to claim that these individual pictures were not made at Fifty Feller Road is welcome to go to latlong.net, where you can actually punch in with a right click on the properties and actually see the GPS coordinates that are embedded into every one of the photographs on the dump drives. Okay? So I think that's actually pretty important to recognize, that the photographs that I'm going to present to you, actually I've got to step backwards just a little bit. I realize this is not the Inland Wetlands Committee, but it is the Town Council, but there's actually a really nifty provision in the state regulations that allow me to address. Again, recording secretary for the Town Council, another one for the Inland Wetlands Committee. I'll deliver it to the town clerk tomorrow morning, too. The town attorney, Mayor Candelaure, who else can I be calling these for? Actually, zoning and Foster Duquez is not here, and the town clerk I'll deliver tomorrow morning. You also have a copy of that in your files. And in that letter, I request treatment under twenty-two dash A nineteen, which allows me, here ladies and gentlemen, under state statutes twenty-two A dash nineteen, I hereby request status as an intervenor in the case of wetlands approvals. Review of the conditions and possible related sections which may be levied because of the current conditions of the above captioned property. I believe that the actions by the current landowner and construction companies operating on the site have violated the original wetland permit, the plan of development, and the zoning regulations associated with the wetland activity on this site. To this end, failure to implement soil erosion controls, use of non-native material in direct conflict with the original IWCA application, and other illegal dumping of solid waste on site, all give reasonable belief that my intervention is necessary to prevent continued unreasonable pollution, impairing of the wetlands, and destroying of public property. I believe that the town and state of Connecticut have not only the right, but the duty to de-license all activity on the property under CGS twenty-two A, three A, five D, two A, and related sections which include monetary damages that's applicable under county and state regulations at the highest amount allowed. You'll see some really nifty pictures in a minute, trust me. Further, as detailed in the close letter, I believe the violations are extensive and pervasive, and will continue to harm the quality of the air and the water of this town if not stopped and remedied immediately, respectfully submitted December ninth, two thousand and fourteen. Patrick Rolland. My copy. Additionally, I actually have a letter for you. It details Town Council recording secretary, the NAWPA is not here, town attorney, Mayor Candelaure, Foster Duquez, and individual copies for everybody else on the board.
Thank you.
This is the letter I will read in a moment. You got a copy of the letter?
Yes.
Yes, it's town attorney and a copy for the recording secretary. Additionally, I thought I made copies of my twenty-two A nine letter for everybody, but if not, they're on the dump drive. So I've made one, two and a half by eleven photograph of each of these pictures. They are, again, each and every one of them are on the dump drive, and we'll go through them briefly, and then relatively pretty quickly. I'll start with the mayor. I'll start with the mayor. And that picture is actually what's designated on the latitude longitude that I showed you a moment ago, when I brought you that original piece of paper that has those original latitude longitude, which is 411929, and that is dab smack in the middle of the construction cycle. So, again, and everybody else doesn't have the luxury, we'll pass the pictures around. In your unprofessional opinion, does that not look like construction debris that doesn't belong in a location where everybody has sworn that there's nothing deposited on this location? Your initial reaction to that picture would be that is the answer. Okay. So, we're going to start with the recording secretary and pass them around. The next picture is a burry pit next to this large photograph of debris that was then deposited into the burry pit. The burry pit, again, in the middle of the job site. Second picture, we'll pass these over. Very clearly, the burry pit in the middle. Oil spill, as reported to Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. The neat thing about the oil spill is it also has geotag locations. Nobody filed a single word with anybody. Second picture of the oil spill. Really nifty thing that I think is important for everybody to understand is while I believe that it's nice that the people have responded to Carrie Duquesne when she inquires as to whether or not there's construction debris on the site. By the time I finish showing you 20 pictures, I will actually ask you to issue a cease and desist immediately. This picture is a series of bricks and cement. You actually have the authority of the Town Council to direct the town employee, the zoning enforcement officer, to do her job, and that job is to issue a cease and desist. Okay? None of this is native. The picture that's going to the attorney now actually has large sections of cement integrated with bricks and rocks and stones, additional to that with rebar, again, and again, and again. Neat picture here, pile of bricks and rocks up against where there should be wetlands, wetlands mitigation information, and I'll read you actually the citations from the approvals and all the zoning permits that have been assessed before here.
Is this important?
And again, every one of these pictures is on your dump drive. There's probably about 10 or 15 extra. I was able to fit a few more on, it's a two gigabyte dump drive. This picture is actually another neat picture. It's actually a pile of leaves that's compost. It's right in the middle of this job site, and it's all beautiful compost from some other place. The only problem with it is there's a very special and specific permit required for leaf compost in the state of Connecticut, and of course, we don't have one for Fifty Feller Road. The next really neat one is pictures of trees pushed into the wetlands, stumps degraded and composted. You look carefully, and you can see that the trees are pushed right over the top of the plastic silt fence, right into the wetlands. This is my favorite of all, to be quite honest with you. It's the refrigerator-sized piece of cement next to the size of the water basin. That is the size of a refrigerator. Miss Duquesne and I actually walked up to this piece of cement. For anybody in their right mind to indicate that this piece of cement is native to that piece of property, needs to really go back and have an analysis done of that property, and that's what I'm going to suggest. Furthermore, bricks, cement, cinder block, asphalt curb cuts. Last time I checked, Mungerbrook Associates has owned that land since the mid-1990s. There was no asphalt curb cuts. Should be no asphalt curb cuts. Lots and lots and lots of illegal dumping of debris. Note also that that has been submitted to the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection for illegal solid waste dump. At the bottom, for those of you that haven't been familiar with the land and the way that it is situated, at the bottom of the hillside, it's 100 acres. The very top of it is not hilled, approximately 250 foot by the elevation. The very bottom is just under 100 feet. So, that gradient across that span is huge for starters, but the second thing is, is that it naturally goes downhill. At the bottom of that hilly area is what was originally designed to be soil remediation in into the wetlands. The inland wetlands and the zoning both require a significant construction and development of this kind of water retention pond. That water retention pond was supposed to be made with material taken off of the site. As a matter of fact, the zoning commission actually gave them special permission to start blasting early, so that they could actually build this burrow pit. Well, that's where that refrigerator thick of cement was. Much of this other debris is over there as well, but these piles, piles of bricks and cement, these aren't little nominal indiscriminate piles, much to the disregard of the town employees. These are gargantuan piles, okay? Piles 100, 150 feet tall. This burrow pit, which is where the water goes, which is where the water's supposed to collect, you'll notice along the side of it, there's extensive erosion. The problem with that, and the reason there's extensive erosion, is because it was made with improper materials. I'll show you in a minute. The original design required forest brick wrap, was supposed to be blasted granite from the site. And you can see there's my refrigerator, pieces of granite, pieces of asphalt, and that's why there's extensive erosion. Again, this little burrow pit, this was taken on December 2nd before the rain. That water should dissipate, it should allow it to erode. And then the other thing, if you look carefully, there's extensive erosion along the side of this. We'll get to why that's important, and why when we make approvals in inland wetlands, and the really neat thing was, is that all of this was supposed to be monitored with weekly, weekly reports, since the original application was approved in 2007. Weekly environmental reports, not a one. Not one single report, not one single investigation has ever been done. Next, we get to silt and sedimentation control and hay bales. 100 acres is a big piece of land. The entire duration of the perimeter was supposed to be wrapped with silt fence and covered with hay bales. Again, I'll show you the plans, I have a few individual pages. There's not a single hay bale on the entire site, not one. Not one at the front gate, not one at Mungerbrook, not one at the back, not one where the silt has actually climbed up and over the two-foot-high fence. The entire location is in violation. Not one little piece, not one little pile, not a few bricks with all due respect. The entire 100 acres is in violation of state, local, federal EPA regulations because the creek leads into Long Island Town. Additional, extensive denuding of the hillside. Part of the regulations require green setback, maintain as many trees as possible, don't waste the entire hillside. And again, as I said, we blew the top off of Notch Hill. It's no longer Notch Hill Road, it's Notch Little Bump with a haircut. Again, the amount of the soil erosion into the wetlands is pervasive. So, to that end, I have a neat little letter, and everybody has copies, it's in your files. It says, "Dear Town Council, while I realize the inland wetlands was the aegis of the original report, that is the only purview under which I, as an intervenor, have the opportunity to participate." So, trust me, that's where my focus is, the violations of the wetlands, and the wetlands are significant enough that it is incumbent upon you, your duty as the Town Council, to direct your town employee to issue a cease and desist. It's that clear, it's that pervasive, and it's that evident. In addition, I'll tell you some of the additional stuff in the original inland wetlands, as well as the zoning, which has patently been not only violated, but completely ignored, which requires you, again, to take action and not wait for the inland wetlands, and not wait for the planning and zoning, because you have the authority to tell your zoning officer to do her job, and that job is to issue a cease and desist.
Okay.
So, I believe the current permits for the above captioned permits are now not only expired and invalid, we'll talk about that, because I believe there's some anomalies in both the permit approval, the permit notification, and as much as Kurt said, also, that there are individual phases. The requirement of this is that each of those phases have separate notices and separate requirements and separate voting, and that wasn't done. There weren't separate notices set to every individual abutting property owner, the property notices was just run through a regular meeting, and because of that, there's some anomalies, and we'll get back to that in a minute. But the original wetland permit application, exhibit three on page 2070, and again, you don't have the opportunity to see that in your, but you'll be able to take it home, and it's in your letter, in your dump drive, excuse me. But I'd like to show you, it's actually kind of a neat thing. It's actually the original inland wetlands application from 2006, and it's signed by Mr. Anderson. And at the very, very end, the last thing that it states, under chemical and physical analysis of fill, it says native. And if you were looking at the same pictures that I'm looking at, it's not native fill, which means from the very, very first application, the first piece of paper that came across his desk, they've lied. Two, memorandum written by Town Planner Z, March 21, 2012, which was written to discuss compliance with conditions 18 and 20, including the planning and zoning approval of the developers' request to have Phase Four blasting material excavation to start from Phase One, so process earth and rock can be used for the proposed infrastructure. However, that area where it's eroding into the pond is the infrastructure that has not been utilized. We used some sort of other inferior material. For the photographs, there's a large pile, a large pile of non-native leaf compost stored on the site, which is in direct violation of the special use permit, the planning and zoning permits, as well as violation of state DEP regulations 22A, 208I, making sense with page 62 and 66 in your packet for taking home. Per the letter dated August 21st, all of this information is actually in the packet. August 21, 2007, confirming the planning and zoning approval of special use permit under applicant 2007. Note four indicates, individual site development plan application shall be required for each construction phase, starting with the first submittal, being Phase One of each site plan shall in detail the specific site work to be done.
Mr. Rowland, can I stop you for just a minute, please? You've given us a mountain of information-
Right.
-all of which is foreign to us, and it's very difficult for us to digest and understand where you're going with this. Can I first ask, what is your interest? Are you in a butter?
My, I am not in a butter, and that's why I read the 22A-19. I'm an interested party. I used to live in the town of North Ranford. I do not currently live in North Ranford, and by filing the 22A-19, I'm actually allowed, I'm availing myself of the procedures. But what's important, what's important to know is that I've walked this property for many years, up the old dump road. I've mountain biked and I've hiked back through City Mission. I went through there on Thanksgiving weekend and was appalled.
Mr. Rowland, stop just a minute. We've listened to you for a good 15 or 20 minutes. I'm just trying to understand the scope of your protest and where we're going with this, because we can't listen for hours to a presentation that-
It'll take me about 10 minutes. I've actually read the whole thing, practiced it several times.
Listen to me for about three minutes, okay? That's all, that's all it'll take. You're not in a butter, you're not a resident of the town, you're not an attorney representing a property owner in the town?
Correct.
So, your interest in this property is it's a place that you like to walk, like on a trail?
And I'm a concerned citizen for the environment, and that's why I filed the 22A-19.
Okay.
Okay. I have friends and family that live in North Ranford. I currently do not, and I have previously been a resident of the town.
Understand that we certainly want our town employees to do their job, but this is not facilitating that process by berating us with all of your concerns. Not that they're not legitimate, I just don't have the ability to absorb them and understand them. I'm this much, I'm no less.
And that's why, that's why I'm bringing you the additional information, why I brought you everything on the dump drive. To that end, what I'd like to do is just explain the seven or eight really critical things that elevate this to becoming a cease and desist. Kurt indicated that we were going to-
My three minutes are still, I still have a couple left, okay? How long are we prepared to entertain this presentation?
I think that this is kind of the wrong venue, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it certainly is. I think, I think out of courtesy to Mr. Rose, as a councilperson, I think this was put on the agenda, and I think we have the gist, and more than the gist, of Mr. Rowland's complaint. We, as a Town Council, despite what you may have heard, or read, or even believed, we don't intervene and demand that the zoning enforcement officer issue a cease and desist. You can go to court and get the court to, you can file a call to Mandamus and get the court to order the zoning enforcement officer to do something that you feel is virtually ministerial, it's so obvious, there's no discretion involved. And I'm presuming, but I don't know, and I don't know if anybody else knows, if you've actually filed anything with the inland wetlands commission, and some sort of a, an appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's non-action, if you will.
That is, that is actually the one thing I can appeal. That is the one thing that I know that I cannot appeal. And I'm willing to say, and you probably know that already, that I cannot appeal an inaction, but I can actually ask the council to take action. And that is why I am here, because I have no legal standing to request an inaction, but I sure can scare the love of Jesus out of the rest of the town and get the Town Council to pay attention to those things that have seemingly been swept under the table by the existing zoning enforcement officer, realizing that the old officer has left, the new officer has come into a hornet's nest with the propane, that this might have fallen by the wayside.
Yeah, I don't know that you, I, with all due respect, and I appreciate all the research you've done and the work you've done, I don't, I think your emphasis on the Town Council as having the ability to essentially trump the inland wetlands commission or the zoning enforcement officer is misplaced. I don't know that you even have standing to go to court, but it is typical when a zoning enforcement officer refuses to act and a party that has standing goes to court, a judge could order the town official to take certain action, but-
I'm trying to avoid this to get to court.
Well, I think you can't avoid, you can't avoid it. I'm not aware, I, I-
But the zoning officer, if, if the board, the Town Council were to say, we're appalled.
Yeah.
Okay? And the Town Council actually has the ability to assert a right under 22-
That's different. There may be persons on the Town Council who would like to have a discussion about this with the zoning enforcement officer. That's a different, that's an unofficial, different situation. You've shown, you've produced pictures and other objects that, that may attract the attention of one or more of the councilpersons to the extent that they want to have a conversation with the zoning enforcement officer. But we haven't, we haven't heard from her, we haven't heard from inland wetlands, and this isn't even, I don't even know that, they even know that you're here tonight making this presentation.
I did have a conversation with Carrie.
Yeah, yeah.
And she asked that I present my request for zoning action in writing to the, to the board.
To the board, what, to the inland wetlands board?
It's actually all three boards.
Excuse me, to the inland wetlands?
She did not make a distinction as to which board. She said the board.
Well, you, you don't think, I, I think that she's, I think she's telling you to, or to, or offering that you, or advising you to make your complaints to the, to the land use agencies that have jurisdiction of this matter. We don't have jurisdiction over land use matters. We simply don't. That's in our charter. And at the, and similarly, we can't, as you may think, simply tell a board or commission or an officer that they must do something or not do something. So, I think you have adequately brought this to the attention of the legislative body of the town, and as I said, there, there may be persons on this committee who would like to have a further discussion with someone else, but that's all we can do tonight. It's not a hearing, and it's, and we don't come to a decision, and I think the council has certainly allowed you a great deal of, of time to express your opinion and your situation, and we get it, and we're going to be taking this home with us.
I appreciate the time that the council has provided, and I implore you to go home and read this document. Read this document carefully. There are many violations that aren't just inland wetlands, which is where I have an opportunity to participate, but it's as well as the planning and zoning. These photographs are actually the, for the council, not for the inland wetlands or for the zoning, so they're submitted for you, and everybody else has a dump drive as well. I will make a similar proposal to both of the two committees and a submission to both of them, but hopefully, yours is as bold as I am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to move on to item F, bitter sweet drive survey update.
I believe we need the engineer, is Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Kirk.
Yep. Did you just get circulated?
Yeah, this should be in the folder for the-
Sorry.
Okay, I mean, you actually should have two sheets. I have a preliminary drawing that was done by the surveyor.
I don't have it here.
Yeah, I don't have it.
There's only three pages.
I have like an email memo from Mathis, but I don't have a drawing.
Maybe we can just circulate it around now. Basically, on the front cover is a preliminary drawing prepared by Navis and Young to do the survey of the property line between number 12, Bitter Sweet Drive, town property and number 16, Bitter Sweet Drive, owned by the Saras. Underneath that, there's also a copy from the GIS map to sort of raise the attention or the concern that there may be some encroachments on the town property. Basically, the survey shows that, yes, there are some encroachments. The structure is a little bit on the, the town property, there's some fencing and some yard also on the, the town property as well. Ballpark, and then just, just a rough, I sort of squared it off, and it's about an 8,000 square foot encroachment, about a fifth of an acre, little under a fifth of an acre on the town property. I don't have the whole history, when it all happened, I just have the results and I, you know, that, that's just being-
Is there a way to do a property swap with the property owners to get our, the equivalent land back and give them the land they're encroaching on?
There would be a way, and I'm, I'm looking for direction for the town council in terms of where you'd like to go, there's costs associated with it, potential impacts on, on both sides. But yeah, I mean, you could almost put a rectangle around where the encroachments are and potentially swap it with the other, the property at number 16.
But before we did that, wouldn't you want to take the time to research and see whether it was an addition or something put on? I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure when the subdivision was done, the boundary in that original house was on its property.
And, and I'm, I'm not saying, I haven't even, I haven't researched anything. You're right, there's, there's a lot of things that have to be looked at. Where's the septic system, you know, if you're doing things, you know, there, the overall impacts that have to be looked at. The one thing I will say, that if you look at that GIS map underneath, Navis and Young said, there's appeared to be another encroachment on the Saras property from, from the others. Something's off in that, that survey according to what Navis and Young said, so there's a couple properties off, it's not just this one. This is the one that affects the town property, that's why we're interested.
You mean the surveyor, the original surveyor screwed up every property boundary going up the street?
There could have been, the ones at the end of the cul-de-sac seem to be the ones that he pointed out. If you look on that, there's a GIS, there's a map underneath, and there seems to be the neighbor encroached on the property of number 16 as well. So something may have been off when the original developer did that subdivision. But again, I'm, I'm handing you out preliminary because I wanted to have some information provided for you, the town council. I don't have the final map, but that's certainly what everything's looking at. Again, I haven't researched the history of the permits or anything like that, that those are all things that probably, you know, should be looked at, and then, you know, based upon that decision in terms of what direction the town council wants to go.
But if you look at that, Joe, you know, back when this was done, and, you know, surveyors were good, but all it took was, because I've seen this before in, you know, subdivisions out of the 50s and 60s, you know, they didn't have GPS on their machine that told them where they set up. And, you know, and I've run into, you know, a boundary line being 50 feet off in an old subdivision, which each lot, you know, followed from, from where the original, or where a subgrader made a mistake back then, you know, then it's like, okay, they set that in stone, like this is what we're going off of, and then they moved down the line. So, so, so you, you could see how this, you know, how it could happen.
The interesting thing, I thought, initially looking at, I thought our GIS mapping, you know, that's a more or less, that's the assessor's maps that are overlaid on a aerial photo. I thought there was, I was thought and sort of hoping that maybe it was just a bust on that, but actually, it turned out the GIS mapping was, was pretty close, which, I said, there's a, there's a, a big bust in that.
So then would you, would you, would you want to look at it to make the lot legal? Like what's that, that, is that in a 15-foot side yard set, setback?
Yeah, it's an R40. And I got to look where that side, you know, exactly how it's set up. Certainly, you wouldn't want to create non-conformity. The lot's, it's a bigger lot. My gut reaction, you probably could just square it off, you know, put a rectangle in the back and get something at the lower end that adds to the town property. It's only an equal swap, that looked to be feasible, just on the initial sort of, on the quick look.
Ideally, that's the way I'd like to see it worked out. You don't want to hurt the property owner and-
Right.
But you can't just do it from what we have here, you've got to have the final map.
I need the final map, that's correct.
Underground utilities, any septic systems, anything of that nature, where they are. At the end of the day, if it results in a non-conformity, this may be one of the few genuine hardships I've ever seen that would authorize a variance. And if that's the worst we're confronted with is asking ZBA to grant the variance to the lot owner, I think that's a good solution, but clearly something needs to be done.
And again, I, I do need the final map. I did get the number when I asked for initial cost for the survey, like, I got numbers from surveyors for, to do a subsequent map and to do an exchange. It was $750 to draw up that map. And that was Navis and Young gave, you know, they were the low on, on both items I asked to be quoted. We haven't authorized that. We can come back at, you know, with a subsequent meeting when I have the final map, if the town council would like to go ahead. Again, some of the thoughts, who's covering the cost? Is it all town costs? Is it share costs? I'm just sort of throwing those out, but there are costs associated.
I mean, is the addition over the property line here?
The addition, I don't have the exact number because again, it's a rough map. It looks like it's maybe a couple feet over the one corner.
And what is all the, just fences, I see?
The fences, there's a fence around there, there's a lawn area.
So he, I mean, something must have happened at some point, did he encroach that one property?
If you like, just as a point of information, the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Sierra are here tonight, if you have any questions of them. They're here tonight. They also think, they only acquired the property relatively recently, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay.
This is all due to the cell tower.
Right, right. That's what we saw.
...our attention. And our ultimate goal is, once we resolve this, is to implore the council to consider, to donate this land in question to the land trust, which is a butt, so to have some continuous land and eliminate the possibility of, you know, AT&T or whatever coming in the future or whatever, that was supposed to put aside. And from what I've told them, the land trust has quite a few parcels in town in similar situations. So, but that's just a field of gold. We just bought the house two years ago, this is all new stuff, so.
And it's, this is, this is as you bought it?
It is, and I prefer not to give you my son, it's my favorite part of the house. The red light went right through that.
Only a couple inches, right?
Take the lawn.
We could have town council meetings there. It's on tickets.
Yeah, I have one, Mark.
And then you do know that the other, the other encroachment, you know, we're not going to get involved in that.
Well, that's the other thing.
Yeah, we're not going to have the survey do that. That's, that's between you and your neighbor. You know, the town's not going to-
I'm afraid he's going to fall on his driveway, don't sue me, because it turns out to be my driveway.
Well, don't, don't slip and fall in our corner.
I got to give you the bill for the trees I cut down on your yard, the insurance company maybe cut down before you closed, so.
We want those trees.
Just cut it off.
But you know what, Kirk, just, you know, so, so, so they seem, you know, like they, they're innocent bystanders. To educate ourselves, including you and, and Carrie in planning and zoning, somehow there was an addition put in there, and somehow, like he just said, a bank told him to cut trees on the town land, and, you know, where was the map and the deed when they're, I know, I've been to an awful lot of closings, and there's a lot of things here that went wrong.
Absolutely.
You know, there's a lot of things that went wrong, and we need to make sure that we get this figured out on the town side, like, you know, I mean, if you go back in the aerial photos and look at the property, if you can't find, I mean, it's probably, it very well could be that there was an addition, there was an addition built up there, it's kind of by itself, without a permit.
And there's a bank tax on it as well as for a long time?
Yeah, that's a possibility. I mean, if, if there's a permit on it, we should have a record of it on the micropiece.
Right, but we could check the-
Yeah.
-ten year aerial photos too, and see just when it happened, you know?
Yeah, you can go back, there's a number of years you can go back, but, was it concurred to the council, once I get the map, I'll provide that information and basically findings and then some recommendations for, to alleviate, alleviate it. And I, I think at this point, unless I'm hearing wrong, it's looking at the potential swap of parcel between number 12 and number 16 to see if that works, so an equal swap. And again, bring it back to town council for consideration, review, and then subsequent action. You can, I've got extras there.
For what we commissioned, that's not the final drawing.
That's not the final drawing, that was just, they had a, they gave me a preliminary drawing, so.
So this is, this is encroaching from these people, on his property, right? This isn't all of this. So there's a baby crow there. So he's talking about land swap right here.
Thank you, thank you. Item 12, new business, discussion and action. Item A, emergency management performance grant application, 2015.
Yeah, this is the annual performance grant application. There's a, a letter in your packet, and also I redid a, a memo here that just needs the authorization, the resolution for, from the council for, for me to execute and sign the documents, but essentially $7,000 we get every year to help with the emergency operations center and the, the costs associated with that as part of our emergency management
I'd like to move the motion, be it hereby resolved that the town of North Bramford may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that Michael T. Paulus, as town manager of North Bramford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town council, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Second. Moved by Councilor Angeloni. Seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, financial report.
We have the report for the period November 2014, period's November 2013. Report remains unremarkable, tax collections remain solid, overall revenues slightly tick ahead of last year, expenditures about on target with last year, no departments are over expended as of yet, and if you want to ask any, any questions anybody has. No comments. It's good news.
We almost put you on the police commission.
You almost got put on the police commission.
Okay, no questions. Tax refunds. Moves to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item 13, citizen statements and petitions. Having none. They have a motion to move into executive session with the town attorney, town manager. And then John Schuler.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.